Alright everybody, sorry for the delay but we're ready to go and want to make sure that we record for anyone in the community that wants to either follow along or catch up with us later. So, I'm going to call this meeting of this work session, I should say, of the Washington County School District Board of Trustees to order, and we will begin with our roll call. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Feumster absent. Trustee Frankel.
Here.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Here.
I'm here. Trustee Mayor's absent. Trustee Raymond.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
I'm here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Then we'll go into our pledge of allegiance and we're going to ask Mr. Pete Etcher, he has been the man of, I can't say the hour, of the year and all of that work, so I'll ask him to lead us in the pledge this morning.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Etcher. Well, good now if we have any public comment, Ms. Bachelder, we'll hear that now.
Darlene Hess.
Welcome, Ms. Hess. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon to all of you. And my name is Hesse, Darlene Hesse.
Hesse. I should remember that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, I just want to say, I want all of you people to know, we have our Wild Creek group and we are for education and we are for schools, we're for new high schools, for everything, but we are not for taking down a $30 million golf course and turn it into a school. And we have so many adversity things, so many, the traffic and the high voltage poles, the FAA, the flood plain, I mean, it's just unbelievable. And over the weekend, they had on 60 Minutes, they were talking about, a lot of people don't pay attention when people talk about these flood plains and then along comes this horrible flood, like for Houston. And they think it's very important that people start listening to the people. I can't imagine what we went through in January, the flood area was just tremendous. I took pictures of it. And we've had that before, one time when I was out of town in 85, that was quite some time in between. But the destruction, the golf course supposedly, they even said on Sunday, 60 Minutes, that they put golf courses in these areas because they're the ones that can really handle the flood plain. But I hope you people really kind of think more about it. I think it will be the most astronomical expense for Washington County schools to build a property, to build a high school there. And I just hope that you take into consideration when they have the BLM, $10, you know, an acre, that's a fantastic deal. And it seems like we have so many different areas around that you could build schools on and not to take a golf course. Right now, you know, there's so many people playing over there, I don't know if they're, they're just so frightened to death that they're never going to get to see that place or what. I can't believe how many people I've seen in the last couple of months that have been over there. And we had people signing petitions against this and there's only one person that turned me down. And we have many names. I mean, people do not want that. And another thing, our news media, I don't think, has been very fair to the public about this. There's many places above, my husband and I walked the neighborhood this last weekend, and there's like two people that only knew that there was considering a high school going in. And anyway, I hope you folks will take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hesse. We appreciate you being here.
Kathleen Shep.
Ms. Shep, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. And thank you for responding to my email. I'm here also about Wild Creek Golf Course and I realize that there are a lot of aspects of that property that make it appealing. Not only is it just gorgeous to look at, but also you have some infrastructure there. And I could see why you would think it would be optimal, but I think that you need to realize that it is a shameful waste of a huge asset for our community, the open space, the green space, the animals that live there. And whenever you're considering another property, then think about the $30 million that's going to be wasted if you tear into the golf course. And you can either add that to the other side, you know, and say, okay, well, you know, this is what we're saving by not building on Wild Creek. Or look at it any other financial way. There's a lot of ways you could twist things around. I really do enjoy the animals that are out there and I enjoy the green space and it's just a shame. And I'm asking you, please don't tear it up. Also, I read a story about how schools bring crime to areas and I want to plead with you about that as well. Those of us who live there are older, most of us are above 60 years old and we have acreage or at least small acreage, like maybe one acre, but our homes are removed from one another so we don't have the community protection that you have when you're living close by your neighbor. I think that that makes us like soft targets for anybody that has some nefarious ideas. And young people that are full of young energy can sometimes get together and make some bad plans. I just want to look at that as well as part of our negative response to your building there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Do you have any others, JJ?
That's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Did we miss anyone that wanted to comment during the public comment period? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to agenda item 1.05. It's an action to adopt the agenda. I will entertain a motion from my colleagues if that is so the pleasure unless there's something you'd like to, not a whole lot to reorder. Have a second, moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Is there opposition? Okay, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. And we will go right now, right down into agenda item number two. This is 2.01, excuse me. This is why we're here, why we are here for this work session. This is presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding an update to this, to the budget for this fiscal year, fiscal year 1819. It includes a summary, the budget deficit, various reports of how we allocate resources, the budget planning process, and continued discussion on best practices in school budgeting as we move forward. Certainly, a community input and consideration of action to direct the superintendent and staff as so will be the pleasure of the board. And before us, again, our usual suspects, Mr. Tom Szysinski and Mr. Mike Schröder, and we have, and more, and more. And Jeff, Jeff, thank you for being here. All of you, the floor is yours, gentlemen.
Thank you, President Taylor. For the record, Tom Szysinski, Chief Financial Officer, Superintendent Davis, and remaining members of the board. Been a little while since I've been up here, nice new setting. So yes, we're here to have a continuing discussion of the budget. And so, we like to start with this next slide, if I can get the clicker to work. Let's see. Alright, JJ, I'm challenged. Alright, JJ's helping me out. So, building a budget takes all of these elements. And so, as a continuation of our August 19th meeting with you at TMCC, we talked to you about GFOA's best practices for budgeting. And so, obviously, we do most of these elements already, in some cases to implement the new GFOA best practices. We need to enhance some of the things that we're doing. So, we have already got a great team in terms of the school board, Superintendent Davis and our leadership team. We need to enhance the budgeting practices to marry the budget even more succinctly to the strategic plan, and we're going to talk to you about that today. Obviously, we're here because of our facilities and our schools with our primary focus being on our students and sharing information. And as part of building a budget, you need to make data-driven decisions. So, as we go through the process with you today, you'll see that we're trying to build a budget for fiscal year 19, you know, by enhancing our data-driven decisions. And obviously, we need to involve the community in our process as we always do, and we'll talk about that as part of our discussion today. So, today's work session is a focus again on fiscal year 19's budget. If JJ can help me with the slide, thank you. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Davis, who's going to kind of help set the tone for us today.
Yes, thank you, Tom. I think it's important to note for the public that today we will not be making decisions on the actual budget, but really the process as we go out to share this information and how we do this work. What is important for us is to get feedback from the trustees around this process. As we've talked in the past, we wanted to start this process much earlier. And so, as Tom mentioned, we started this on August the 19th, but we have somewhat of a timeline and a process and we need some input from the trustees on what that process would look like so that we could go forward. And then I think as we communicate this out to the public, the opportunities in which they have to be a part of it. Because what we've heard often is that people didn't know about that, those opportunities. And so, we want to do a better job of providing those opportunities and getting the information out to them.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis.
You're welcome.
So, again, to kind of continue on from there, we're going to be talking to you about where we're at currently, in terms of fiscal year 17, fiscal year 18, and building fiscal year 19. We're going to enhance the discussion around what we're doing in terms of building the budget process around GFOA's best practices for school budgeting. The focus today is going to be on the district's general fund. As you all know, we have nearly a three-quarter billion dollar budget, but we're going to be focusing our energy on the general fund because that's the one that we've been battling with structural deficits for the last decade. So, that's the one where most of our attention is focused and all of our attention will be focused today. And then we'll again, get into the budget process policies and have a discussion around community input. Next slide, please. So, we just completed fiscal year 17 on June 30th. And so, our auditors are actually on board with us and going through our books as we speak. From what I understand, from the team, we're in the last week of field work, which means the auditors are completing their onsite work with us and then they head back to their office. And, you know, we've already provided them with the financial statements. We're in the process of writing the MDNA and the transmittal letter and working on footnotes with the auditors. So, our goal will be to have that audit report to you by the end of October. Prior to that occurring, we will send out the end of the year fund balance to you and all the assignments that are associated with the fund balance. We always get your blessing on those before we finalize those for the audit report. So, prior to us issuing the final report, you'll get an opportunity to look at that fund balance. Now, we're in fiscal, so that's one fiscal year that we're wrapping up. We've just started fiscal year 1718 on July 1st. All the allocation processes for schools have been completed and we're in the final steps of determining our final enrollments, which the final official enrollment for the start of the school year starts at the beginning of October. So, it's not final today, but should be final by the beginning of October. And then next is fiscal year 19. And again, starting that process, Superintendent Davis said much earlier, almost five months earlier than we did last year at the request of the board. So, we're back here today to continue that discussion from October, I'm sorry, August 19th, and continue to build that process with you as we work our way towards addressing what we already know is going to be a deficit for fiscal year 19. And we'll get into the details of that in a few moments. Again, we'll talk to you about the estimate being based on its most current available data as we know it today. Again, we're just getting the school year started, so we're still finalizing some numbers. We're still working with the Department of Education to get all of our funding items in order. And again, we're finalizing fiscal year 17 to see what the numbers look like. And so, some things still can change as we, as we work our way through this early process. And as you can see in red, extremely tentative budget status. We're just getting started with this process much, much sooner than we normally do. So, we like to throw a little bit of caution to the wind. We've had a nice extensive conversation with you about GFOA's best practices in budgeting. And so, you know, really with a focus of aligning our strategic plan to the budget, we talked about return on academic investment, return on overall investment. But I'll just make a comment here. Most accountants that do a calculation, return on investment, it's a mathematical computation. But when you're dealing with student achievement and graduation rates, some form of return on investment becomes more of a subjective discussion as opposed to just a mathematical discussion. So, therein lies some of the challenge of implementing GFOA's new best practices as it relates to return on investment. So, we'll dive into that a little bit as we go through this. And again, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about budget principles and budget policies today. Next slide, please. Unless we got that, thank you. So, so from August 19th workshop, we left you with the number of a preliminary estimate of the deficit being 22 to $28 million. So, at this point, I'll pass it off to our budget director, Mike Schroeder, who will start you at this point in our discussion.
Thank you, Tom. Good afternoon, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. We've already started on this in August. This is pretty much the same slide we had back then. As Tom mentioned, we're really in flux right now. We're finishing up fiscal year 17. We're just starting fiscal year 18. Now, we're moving to fiscal year 19 and there's so many little things that can happen before we actually get to a point where we've got a very good grasp and true understanding and finite detail of what that fiscal year 19 budget's going to look like. But we do know from a broad perspective, kind of where we'll be making some general forecasting and determinations. Based on these parameters, 3% on ad valorem, I believe that's achievable. But we're also, we're kind of above that in fiscal year 18. So, one of the ways to actually get to a sustainable budget where we're structurally balanced is not get too crazy on our revenue estimates. Because when those don't come in, it's kind of like a double whammy. First of all, you lose it in the current year. Now, that's going to roll into fiscal year 19 and cause another hit to the budget. So, these are reasonable estimates, I believe. LSSTs, sales tax, local school support tax. That one, you could budget at 10% or 1%. It really doesn't matter because it's just offset by what the state is going to contribute. Right now, I think the state is using 5% in their two-year projection when they do the DSA budget. Government services tax, it's not a big amount. So, major increases to this account aren't necessarily going to balance a $20 million deficit, but it helps contribute a little. Then, distributive school account, what's going to happen there is our current fiscal year 18 per pupil amount is $5,677. Next year, it goes up to 5,700, or fiscal year 19, it goes up to 5,737. So, it's a $60 increase. And if you think about that in the grand scheme, that would add about $3.8 million to our budgeted student enrollment that we're using for fiscal year 18. But overall, you see, even though that per pupil amount goes up, this number goes down because if LSST goes up by 9.6 million, this account goes down by 9.6 million. Ad valorem tax goes up by 3.2 million. One-third of that is offset by this account. So, the net impact of all that is that it actually goes down. And so, if you look at all our major revenues, these would be increases on what we're expecting for fiscal year 18. That's about $7 million. The problem is, when you look at our ongoing expenditures now, salary roll-up costs, these are experience increments for employees on our salary schedules. Those average about 2%, which is about 8.2 million to our budget. We presented a plan a couple of years back for our health insurance fund. It was getting to a very unstable state. So, we transferred money from OPEB and that has to end probably for fiscal year 19 as part of that three-year plan. We also said we probably need 10% increases in order to stabilize that fund. So, this will be about a 10% increase, again, in health insurance. Once again, we're so far in advance, we don't know how the fund's going to turn out for fiscal year 18. And that will weigh into what we do for 19. But for right now, this is the best we can do. So, that'd be about 4.8 million. Then, employee relations, basically our negotiated agreements with employees. We pretty much have agreements for all our groups, one through fiscal year 19. For the teachers, that's mainly adding steps to the salary schedule for, there were kind of dead zones. And for other bargaining units, it was cost of living increases and some step changes, things like that. These have all come to the board over and been approved as part of regular board of trustees meetings. So, for fiscal year 18, those are about $4 million in costs and we offset those with turnover vacancy savings. But those costs roll into fiscal year 19. So, they add costs to the budget. But we've also already negotiated for fiscal year 19 and it's roughly another $4 million. We're anticipating getting turnover and vacancy savings of $4 million to offset those fiscal year 19 costs. So, they would net out to zero, but the $4 million from the prior year carry forward. So, when you add up these ongoing expenditures, that's about $17 million. When you compare that to our ongoing revenues, then you get about a $10 million deficit. And that's kind of the definition of a structural deficit where your ongoing revenues are not meeting your ongoing expenditures. And this is an issue we've had for quite some time now. Obviously, we want to do something about it and that's what we want to do as part of this budget process is say, how can we address this and how can we make this better in the future. Beyond that, one of the things that also caused the structural deficit is using fund balance or savings. We used about $17 million of that when we balanced the fiscal year 18 budget. Those dollars don't come back in fiscal year 19, so you're in the hole right away from that. And this would be offset a little bit by some, we could probably use E-rate or move some other costs. But anyway, it's about 16 million there. We have a textbook adoption cycle. Fiscal year 19 calls for about $750,000 more. We've got new property insurance quotes and bills and those are about $400,000 more than they were in the prior year. We have a TIP4 grant that basically has created our MyPGS or growth system where we evaluate all our employees. And we have employees that operate that system. So, some of those costs are considered pretty much what we need and they need to be carried forward. So, unless we get another grant, which this one is ending, then that'd be about 1.2 million. So, anyway, those add to the total deficit. But there's all sorts of these other unknown factors. I mean, currently, we believe we'll finish good in fiscal year 17. We needed another $5 million as part of that to carry into fiscal year 18. We had already identified about $12 million, but we were hoping to get another five. We should be able to do that. And hopefully, there'll be some excess that could even carry over to fiscal year 19 from fiscal year 17.
Absolutely. Trustee Holland.
Thank you. I hope you don't mind if we ask questions as we go. Okay. So, how's the ending fund balance looking for fiscal year 17 at this point?
Sure. Preliminary, final, completed, audited, we came in at $43,304, which is slightly below $10 million reduction from last year, but significantly better than what we had originally forecasted. So, as Mike pointed out, you know, we worked with the board. We identified $10 million early to help fiscal year 18. We came through with the other five and we'll go through those final fund balance assignments, which we'll send all, to all of you in the next few weeks to finalize that fund balance. But we came in better than expected. Yep.
Thank you for the question. Yes, feel free to chime in whenever you want to. So, once again, we're in flux. We're just starting the new year. We could have savings in fiscal year 18. We could have more costs. It's yet to be known how everything's going to play out. We may want to continue enacting savings for the current fiscal year to allow them to roll into fiscal year 19. But once again, if we want to get to this sustainable budget down the road, every time we use savings, you still got to make it up the next year. A goal, if we're going to do a three-year process, which I think is really great that we're considering that, putting that into the strategic plan, then if we can chip away at this over three years, then we can get to that point. So, we can use savings, but we have to start monitoring it and saying, we got to make real sustainable reductions.
Okay, she got it.
Okay.
Let me just pipe in here real quick. For those that may not have already identified, we've got a workbook for you. And so, you can take notes as you go through this process or follow online, whatever's easiest for you. I should have said that at the beginning, so I apologize for that.
And what I will also say, and I see you guys, President Holland, is as you have questions during this work session, please just go ahead and chime in so that they can, we can, we don't have to be as formal, because we want to ask questions along the way as necessary. So, please go right ahead.
Thank you. So, I'm sure you guys are going to do an analysis of what's in the fund balance because that will be, that'd be a good guide for us to know. And perhaps over time, are there places where we see the same savings year after year? That would be really helpful for us to know. So, I'm sure you're working on that already.
Yes.
Double yes.
No, exactly. I mean, how did we get our fiscal year 17 savings? Are those going to be continuing in fiscal year 18 and 19? Certainly, those will be part of the overall process. So, right now, because of all the uncertainty, it's more of a range and we're going to fine-tune these numbers over time. But you're not really going to see that until all our current employees settle in, we revise our projections for the current fiscal year, use that as a base to move into fiscal year 19. Okay. So, by statute, we have to file a balanced budget and we have till June 8th to do that. Probably, our goal is to have that done by the public hearing on the tentative budget, which would be May 22nd of 2018. We've talked about this in the past, a lot of the tools and things we use to balance the budget are kind of gone. We can't do premium holidays for health insurance anymore. We've been transferring money from OPEB to our health insurance fund to help mitigate increases there. Used other savings and other funds, but we're running out of those tools. So, it means that we have to make really tough, difficult decisions. And by using this best practices in school budgeting process, hopefully it will make those decisions a little easier because we're going to use data to drive the decisions, base it on, look at student outcomes, what's the best value for those student outcomes. And in the current year, we're still doing a lot of things to help enact savings. We still have our financial review committee. We have a process currently where we're trying to create vacancy savings when positions, non-school positions become open. We're a minimum, want to hold it at least one month to create vacancy savings and that can help roll into fiscal year 19 and offset our problems there. Oh, did I go back? It's working too good. Okay. So, as I said, we're starting the best practices and part of that process is what we're going to be talking about today. One of the early steps in that process is developing budget policies and budget principles. Certainly, adding the goal to our strategic plan to have a structurally balanced budget and fiscal sustainability in three years, were great things to put in there. And it makes our mission much more focused, okay? And it drives it right down to everybody in this district to say, this is something the board wants. We put it into our strategic plan. This is something we need to make happen within three years. And to start the process, once again, you have to start with data. And that's kind of what we're trying to do here. Inside the book on the narrative in attachment A, I've tried to outline our budget process, the way we do it right now. What you'll see is that when we put together the budget, we really try to force the dollars to follow the kids. We do staffing allocations based on a formula. If you're a Tyler at risk school, you get more allocations. If you're a bigger school with more students, you get more allocations. Not only teachers, but other support staff. We have budgets outside those staffing guidelines for music, ELL, and special education. Those ELL allocations follow the students to the school where they're located. Same with the special education. They follow the students to the schools where those programs are located. So, within our budget, I believe we do a very good job of making the dollars follow the students. And we also, you could almost consider that a weighted funding formula within our own budgeting practice because we're providing more support to students who are struggling. So, today, also not just understanding that process to say, okay, well, how do we actually allocate those resources? And this, once again, these numbers will be refined and they'll And this, once again, these numbers will be refined, and they'll probably change the next time you see this, based on updated projections and things like that. But it's just to give you an idea of where the resources are allocated and different ways to look at the data. And you have to have the data as a starting point to begin an analysis. So this is really to say, we can look at this in multiple ways, and based on those ways, we can compare to other districts and start an analysis and say, are we practicing good programs? Are they really supporting kids? Are we getting the outcomes we want to see? How are we going to address this, balance our budget, and get to a financially stable environment down the road? So early in the process, we have to establish budget principles and policies. We already have a budget policy, and it hits on some of the key points that are in this best practices, but it really needs to be defined a little better and expanded, so we have a clearer picture of what we're doing. So by doing policies and principles, it certainly shows our commitment to saying the budget's important, and we need to do it in a manner that really is best for our students. Principles, we'll get into those, but they're general guidelines for the budget process. Policies clarify the intent regarding how we're going to manage our financial resources. So attachment B, there's a lot of narrative there, talking about budget principles and budget policies. This is just a real summary of that, but these principles are things that the board and staff have to agree on. They kind of guide our budget process, how we're going to, things that we're going to honor throughout the process. And most of them are kind of common sense stuff, and I think they're really good, but when you're doing the budget process and everybody understands these, it helps everybody focus a little more on what we're doing. So one of them would be, goals for student achievement should drive the budget process. Okay, that's what we're here for, what this is all about. We want to make sure that we're putting things in the budget to help students, and it also allows us to track progress. Decisions should be driven by data. And so programs and services providers, we want to make sure they have a track record of success for student outcomes. So when we're making these decisions, it's like, is this really the best program? Does it provide the best value and help us get better student outcomes? Resourcing decisions on total value created for students. And what this is really saying is, we want to allocate available dollars optimally to create the most benefit for children, given the cost. Critically, reexamine patterns of spending. We can't just say, why do we keep budgeting for this if we never use it? Okay, it's always a savings. It's based on this process, there's a better new process to do this, and that's going to be part of the process as we work to develop solutions to the budget deficit, to say, we really have to look at how we currently allocate these resources and why we're doing it, and if it's still the best thing to do. Develop and implement a program review and sunset process. This is basically to say, we need to look at our programs. Are they really achieving what we expected of them? Is there a more beneficial way to do it or cost-effective way to do it? Or is it something maybe we shouldn't be doing anymore and look at alternatives?
If I can just ask a question there. I mentioned to Superintendent at the board meeting last time, interest in doing kind of a fundamental review where we might bring some expert folks in from outside, like Council on Great City Schools. Yeah. And it doesn't have to be them, but I think it's really helpful to bring in somebody from the outside, because it's hard for us, when we're all invested in the things that we're doing, to really have that critical reexamination of our spending and the program review. So I hope we can just have a bookmark to, you know, have further conversation about doing that.
If I could just respond, for the record, Tom Szysinski, the Council of Great City Schools is a wonderful resource. Obviously, they're the top urban school districts in the United States. We closely affiliate with them, and we work with them. And for them to come and basically have our peers come in and say, what are they doing around the country, and comparing what we do to what they do is a great fundamental review. So I couldn't agree with you more.
And just for the record, the superintendent and I spoke about that last time we met, so that has not been lost at all, so.
Yeah. Just wanted to add it to the conversation, and particularly with regard to program review and sunsetting, because it's really hard for us to let go of programs that we have, because all of them have constituencies that will be, you know, really strong. So I think it's great to have some outside eyes, particularly on that piece. Do we have a process now for program review and sunsetting?
I guess more so from a grant perspective, because, you know, you get grants and the grants expire, and so you have to look at, if the grant's going to expire, are you going to continue that, are you going to absorb that cost into the general fund? So more so from a grant perspective, not as much in the general fund area. So this is an area that we've been nibbling at for a while, but now we really want to ramp it up, especially as we bring back solutions to you to help resolve the deficit for nineteen. It's all about saying, okay, we're doing all of these things, but we can't continue to do all of these things, so we're going to have to make some difficult decisions, and we've got to figure out what's giving us the best bang for our buck, what's moving that graduation rate up. Maybe all of these things are moving our graduation rate up, but some are doing more than others. So I think that's, to Mike's point, is we're, and working with Superintendent Davis, we're just going to all have to buckle down as a leadership team and a superintendent and the finance office, and working with all of our schools and departments to say, you know, we've got to come up with what's going to be best for the district and bring that to the board so that you can see what our thought process is.
And I would also just to chime in, I think certainly the program review, but also I think, you know, reexamining patterns and spending, that's an important thing, I think we get out of that, you know, as well as we look to, you know, when we'll have, how we should approach that kind of overall review from the outside, so.
Great comments. When we get into budget policies, actually, program review and sunset of programs is a policy that I think we probably want to bring forward to the board to look at and examine and authorize becoming part of board policy, but we'll get to that one in a second. The other part is ensure equality of opportunity for students, so we want to make sure students who are struggling receive more resources. We want to make sure students in the general population are getting equal resources. That's the basic premise of that principle. Take a long-term perspective, and this doesn't mean long-term financial analysis. It's really saying, if we've got a strategy or an objective, we don't necessarily have to implement it in one year, especially if it's a high priority. Look at, how can we do this over the course of several years? That's kind of what that is saying. And be transparent, make sure we're using valid financial and performance data when we make these decisions. So those are just budget principles. Is that something that you, as a board, like, or is there something you would add to that? Or is this something you would disagree with if we had this as part of the overall budget process kind of guiding us as we do this?
So I guess this is where we have the dialogue about principles that we brought forward, and we'd like to know if there's other principles that you would like us to also put in here. This is where we just kind of talk about the work.
And I think you may have mentioned it before, and I apologize if I didn't catch it, and I think you mentioned it at the August meeting, but these principles, as you presented them, and I think it's great that we have a dialogue about them, I just wondered, did we draw them from other best practice work, or where did we, did we get these from, did we create these on our own? Or are there principles that other districts have identified as successful principles to follow, or other national experts have identified as principles to follow?
Good question. I'm a plagiarist. I took this right out of the GFOA.
That's on the record. Mister Shoulder, that's on the record, so.
It's legitimate plagiarism, though, so it's okay.
I always see plagiarism as the highest form of flattery, so I'm sure they appreciate that.
No, they're really common sense and straightforward, and I think certainly we can expand on them. We, as part of the process also, there's a whole cohort of schools that are involved in this, and we want to become part of that cohort and reach out to other people. Like, when we go to Council of Great City Schools, I mean, it's a great way to talk to your peers and learn things like this. And there's Alliance for School Best Practices in School Budgeting, and a lot of those districts already have examples, and we can steal from them and add to this as we see fit. But these were basic, straightforward ones that I think get to the heart of guiding the budget process.
I was just going to add that, from, is it, his name's Matt, what's Matt's last name from?
Bubniss.
Bubniss. He actually presented to us last year, I've seen him actually at national GFOA conferences, and he presented to us at the Council of Great City Schools CFO conference last year. So we've already engaged directly with, so to speak, the author of the GFOA's best practices, and as Mike pointed out, there's already some cohort districts that are part of the Council of Great City Schools that are already maybe a little bit ahead of us on this process. So sometimes it's not always best to be on the bleeding edge, but maybe not too far on the trailing edge, you know, in terms of where they're at. So we're still on the front end of this process with them, so, and I think the timing couldn't be better for us, so.
You know, one principle that I would like to see in here is something about the community. Like, we have to be transparent, which is great, but if with this next budget, I mean, we're going to have to be looking at programs and things that we might have to cut or trim. I mean, that's going to impact people. Cuts always impact people, but it's probably going to happen even more so. So I think some principle about, you know, involving the community in decisions, or I think that would be important to have in there, because these are going to be painful cuts if we have to do them, and the more we can involve the community as a principle of how this budget process goes, I think is better.
Excellent point. We're going to talk about community involvement later on in the discussion, but we can certainly add it as a principle here, so thank you, Trustee Kelly on that.
And I'd even add to that, looking at, you know, basing resource decisions on the total value created for students and for the community, because we are, we are an investment of the community, and we're a resource for the community. And I second Trustee Kelly's points, as I know we all do. It's community being part of the process, the decision process, but also that we recognize that we are a community asset, and part of our mission is to, is to support the total value to the community.
Writing it down as we speak. Okay.
And just, you know, I like these principles, and I appreciate the addition of the community input and involvement. I think one of the things that will be challenging, it's not so much a critique of the principle, is to acknowledge that, number one, it's so small, you know, goals for student achievement should drive the budget process, but that process of identifying what those goals are, what criteria we're going to use to evaluate success and return on investment, I think that process is probably going to be the most challenging part of this process. You mentioned, you know, what's driving the achievement, and you mentioned graduation rates, but I think that part of the discussion can be, what do we mean by student achievement? What other goals are we talking about? Is it just graduation rates? How else are we evaluating student achievement? And what criteria are we using based on that definition of student achievement to help evaluate the program? So I think that's going to be a bigger part of the conversation, not so much to modify the principle, but to acknowledge that it seems simple in writing, but it's a much more complicated conversation that we need to have.
Trustee Frankel, for the record, again, Tom Szysinski, yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. From a Council of Great City Schools CFO perspective, we've been talking about ROI or return on investment now for about four years, and that's been basically the discussion. It is a challenge, because again, it's not a mathematical calculation. There's a subjective component to that, and I know I've had some conversations with Superintendent Davis, and I think she attends some national conversations as well around ROI, and so, yeah, it's, it sounds easy in discussion, but in application, it will be a challenge for all of us to roll this out, and it probably is going to take a few cycles to get it through.
And I'll just add, I agree with you. When you talk about the road to graduation, we always start with pre-K, and what does that look as? You know, we talk about graduation rate, because that's how we're measured publicly. That's what people hang on to. But are kids reading at grade level by third grade? Are kids doing well in math? Are we having kids take AP classes, a diverse background, like all those measurements that builds into student achievement? So for us, I think that we talk about graduation rate, there's always building pieces that, and we write, it's complicated, because when we talk about it, like, okay, so it's not just the end product of a percentage, but those other pieces. So good conversation.
I might just add in, because I love to give him props, and I don't know if he's here, but Ben Hayes in the big system, I mean, I think we're at the cutting edge in terms of our student data information, and so in terms of trying to determine return on investment, we're going to collaborate with Ben Hayes, because he's just done a remark, him and his team have done a remarkable job with the district's academic data, so I think that's really key. So give Ben big props, I've been a fan of his for a number of years now.
I don't know that it would belong in the budget principles, but in looking at the GFOA best practices, one that really hit home for me was year-end savings and what messages we send to departments about what happens with year-end savings, because we certainly don't want to incentivize people to think we have a use it or lose it philosophy here. So how can we creatively and innovatively look at ways that perhaps year-end savings can be used to do research and experiment and look at new practices? And just what we do intentionally about year-end savings can be really impactful in terms of resource decisions going forward. So I just wanted to, I don't think it belongs in the principles necessarily, but I know you already flagged it in the best practices, and I think that might be either a policy statement or a value statement that we make somewhere during this process.
Yes, I agree. You've done your research, and you actually read the stuff. That's pretty good, okay? Which moves us right into budget policies. So policies are really clarify what our intent is regarding how we all manage our resources, and it's, they get very clear, or identify unacceptable, unacceptable courses of financial action, establishing parameters in which to operate and provide a standard to judge our fiscal performance. So we currently have, really, we used to have several budget policies, we kind of condensed them all into one. There's components within that policy that align to best practices, but adding additional policies will just broaden the scope and give us more definitions. So these are, these are some recommended ones, and not that we necessarily will do all of them, but the intent is to bring some of these forward. The details within the policy all have to be worked out, there's not really a canned item. I mean, we can rob from other districts and look at what they have and try to define this, but we also have to look at the way we operate as Washoe County School District and tailor-make the policy to our district. But one is defining what a balanced budget is and how we intend to achieve a structurally balanced budget. As I mentioned before, it's saying, when current resources exceed, current ongoing resources exceed ongoing expenditures, then we get to a structurally balanced state. And I think it would be a good thing to put that into policy and bring it forward for your review, and ultimately make it a district-wide policy. Financial emergency policy, kind of what do we do in a financial crisis? Once again, those would have to be defined in the policy, and everybody would have to agree to that. Long-term forecasting, not just revenues and expense, but also enrollment, looking at grants and what happens to those when they make it part of this long-term forecasting policy also. Asset replacement and maintenance is just really talking about our facilities, other assets, smaller assets like buses, white fleet, and even textbooks and technology. And we have some components of that, but they're in our budget, but they're not really defined in saying, what is our intent? They need to be clarified. Budgeting and management of categorical funds, this gets back to grants and saying, you know, how are we going to deal with this if they go away? And this kind of is also part of the program review and sunset, to say, grants go away, what are we going to do if we have other programs within the general fund? How are we measuring them? How often should we measure them? When we get the measurement, does it meet the expectations? What's the alternative? Where are we going to go from there? Um, and, and budgeting for staff compensation, I don't know that we need to put that in the policy. The, the policy here is that when we do the budget, they really want you to make sure you're including all the compensation related to a position, the salary plus the benefits. And, and we do that as part of our process, because it just gives you a truer and more accurate picture. Um, then the year-end saving one, obviously, as Trustee Holland pointed out, we don't wanna make people just spend, do spend, because they're gonna lose the funds. Is there a better way to say, uh, how can we do this? We do have a carryover policy for schools, departments, it's more hit and miss than by request. And anyway, if we can look at it and say, how can we manage this better for student outcomes and for other needs of the district, it would be a good thing to have. And then last, uh, funding new programs. Um, if we're gonna do a new program, how do we intend to fund them? How are we gonna measure it? I mean, what is the policy behind the whole thing? So, intent here is to bring some of these forward. And for the timeline, I would really say it'd be from now up till December, because at that point in time, we're really getting into the whole budget process a lot more. And if we had these in the background, uh, kinda defining it and driving it, it, it just benefits the whole process. So, any comments about policies? Is there any ones that in particular you think need to come forward very immediately?
I, I don't know if I can answer that question, but I, you know, just doing the math in my head, you know, we only have eight meetings until the end of the calendar year. So, you know, it would be great to sort of set down a map of how you're gonna get those done before we get underway farther, um, because that's a lot of work for eight, and it's not even eight policy meetings. You know, it's, I mean, if we're gonna bring them through the policy committee, uh, it's, what do we have, three meetings?
Yeah.
Even two, we're not even having one, and, yeah, two. We're not, I thought October got...
Just moved.
Oh, okay, okay. So, yeah, so definitely a little project management is gonna be in order.
Okay.
And I just, and just kinda thinking back to August 19th, again, the challenge, I think, of implementing GFOA's best practices is, we'll do everything that we can to get everything we can implemented in one year. But again, I think this is more of a longer-term implementation. So, we'll certainly get as many policies adopted as we can, but if they carry on into the, the next fiscal year, I think as long as the thought process is in place, we'll get that policy adopted at some point. So, um, but yeah, definitely a challenge without a question, without doubt.
In light of that, and the fact that it sounds like it is gonna be a, a longer-term process, you asked the question about what would be priority, given the decisions that we're gonna be facing. I think some of the ones along the lines of program review, not just how often, but how we're gonna do it, how we're going to measure, how we're gonna identify criteria for student achievement, those kinds of policies I think are gonna be really important, because those will be part of those decisions that we're gonna be having to make, um, you know, before, during this budget cycle. So, I think if I were to say, that, that would probably be the, the area of, of priority for me, in addition to a commitment and an intent, of course, to, uh, number one, um, a balanced budget and structurally balanced budget. What I really appreciate about these, and the words you used, was intent. And I think that's what's important about these policies, is that we as a board make a statement about our intent in relation to the budget. And I think it's very important that we make all of these statements. And I think starting, starting with ones related to how we're going to make some of these decisions, and how we're going to measure achievement and outcomes, I think is gonna be very important.
Couldn't agree more.
Thank you for the input. So, now we're kinda moving on to the data, starting to really dive into the budget and learn how we allocate our resources. Once that's understood, you can, a lot of times if you understand this, and you're very familiar with other districts, then you can look at some of this stuff and say, wow, that looks like an area we could look at. But not everybody can do that. And the expectation and anticipation is that when we get into the budget process with, with our department heads and everybody, they're, they're really gonna focus on that and look at that, and look at, do we just need to continue the same old budget, or what's the reason behind that? Is there a better way to do it? Uh, what type of measurement can we do to say, this is probably a better process, or this one isn't working, maybe there's a, maybe there's a, an alternative that we need to do here? But, uh, this'll give you an idea of the different ways that the district, uh, allocates our resources. So, when we're looking at this, we're kinda doing it at a top level than a more defined level is what's happening. Um, our top level that we typically do is based on a standardized set of accounts that every district in the state has to use. Uh, it follows along with our generally accepted accounting principles, the way we have to present items in our comprehensive annual financial report, the way the Department of Taxation wants items sent, and some of the forms for the Department of Education also. So, I call that the, uh, just traditional, because that is the traditional way we do things. And it's very high level. Doesn't mean you can't glean a lot of good information out of it, but, um, it's just the way we're required to report. So, that would really start with attachment C. And each of these are in the budget document, so it's probably easier if you go to those attachments as we're talking about them. Once again, this is a format that we present to the board every time we do the budget for all the different funds. Just gives you an idea, based on what are called programs or functions. Uh, regular programs are normal classroom instruction, special programs are, that's really mostly gifted and talented. Vocational programs, occupational type programs, other instructional, that category really includes a lot of, uh, our English language thing, learner program, and also intervention stuff. Student Support Services, I put definitions on every one of these, but it just gives you a sense of overall where the money is going in a, in a broad sense.
So, at this point, we're gonna, we got a new person up here with us, Jeff Bosser, our, uh, Budget Project Manager. I don't know, we've had Jeff in front of the board before, but Jeff is kind of our data guru. So, as we start to dig down a little bit deeper than the surface, Jeff's the one that helps Mike and I do this stuff. So, we thought it'd be a good opportunity for him to get a little exposure, speaking in front of the board. He never gets nervous like Mike and I do, so he'll be just fine. Right, Jeff?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, members of the board, thanks for having me today. Uh, so, we're gonna go from the attachment C, I think the clicker, Mike, to attachment D. And this report here gives you a breakdown of the program function categories that we looked at in the last report. Those were summarized at a higher level. This report here hasn't broken down into sub-functions. So, as you can see, we look at special programs, there's the gifted and talented that was mentioned before, and then we also have sub-functions in there of improvement of instruction and instruction. Each one of these program function areas is also broken out. Uh, if you look at the header up there, into our major expense categories, we have salary, benefits, purchase services, supplies, property, and other. So, it's giving you a more extensive breakdown of the previous report.
So, I'm just gonna chime in here. So, I, I think as you think about the general fund, you know, we always have to keep in mind, we're a people-driven business, especially in the general fund. So, our, our salary and benefits are always gonna be at this, at close to 90% level, and the remaining portions of the budget are gonna be around 10% globally. But that's probably true of most of the, the individual areas as well. So, salary and benefits are, are gonna be the, the major driver in each of these sections.
And Tom, I have a question about that. Um, it's, it's about vacancy savings. You had mentioned, or talked about it a little bit earlier. And I'm just curious, when a position becomes open, and you keep it as a vacancy for one or two months, or however many months, like, if that were to happen to a position today, is that money kinda saved in a separate pot, so that we can kinda monitor it, so that by the time we get closer to the budget next year, we know that by vacancy savings, we've had, you know, so many hundreds of thousands or millions saved? And then the second question I have on that is, is there a, I don't know, like a, maybe like a hierarchy of, um, certain positions, if, if they're vacant, we immediately wanna fill them, you know, like maybe a teacher position. Um, but then if there's another position, and I won't specify one, but some sort of support position that we think we can keep it vacant for four, five, six months, maybe, um, is there kind of a list of how you guys approach that?
Sure. Um, for record again, Tom Szysinski, uh, so I'll start with your second question first. If, if, if a position becomes vacant, and it, and this, and the position touches a school, it's a teacher, it's a bus driver, somebody that directly interacts with a student, we're filling it, we're not seeking to get a vacancy savings, and anybody that directly impacts a student directly, i.e. they're teaching them, they're transporting them, they're, well, nutrition services is not part of this equation, so that, that wouldn't be an issue there. Um, so, uh, where we seek vacancy savings is non-direct contact with the students. So, I'll use my office as an example. If an accountant leaves the, the office, then we will try and fill that position, you know, for a period of time, because they're, while the accountant's important for the district, and we certainly do everything we can to support student achievement, we're not, I'm not, they don't have me in the classroom, and, and although maybe somebody would want me there, I'm not sure. But, but in any event, gotta find some humor somewhere. But, but in any event, uh, we wouldn't fill that position directly, um, i- i- if it was, uh, you know, some other position outside, maybe human resources, or, uh, it, some other department. And again, they're not directly touching students. That's where we seek the student savings. So, that's your, your second question. Your first question is, do we keep track of those vacancy savings? As part of building any budget process, you're continually evaluating where you were at some given point, and where you're at, at some other given point. And so, as we go from one point to another, we're constantly looking at, what do we budget for salary and benefits, and where are we at today? If we're above where, you know, are, are we on, are we on line, or did we create savings? Because when you're dealing with so many different positions, we, we can continue to track them at a position level, but we can also do it at a, at a budget-to-actual level. So, there's two different ways that we track that. And so, I'm starting to delve in these two guys' area of expertise, so correct me if I said something wrong.
I also have a question. If you could just, um, for, for, for all of us, and for the public as well, can you explain the, the, the concept of improvement of instruction, and what that means, and how it's captured in terms of dollar signs? What, what are we talking about in those categories? Where we say instruction, which I, I immediately assume is, you know, anything related to teachers, et cetera, but what does improvement of instruction include?
So, typically, why he's looking into the finer details, is i- if, if students are failing somewhere, if we're providing some form of, um, remediation, or, you know, something to, you know, they're not gonna make it, and, you know, we see they're not gonna make it, we, we need to provide some additional resources to, to support that kid outside the, the regular resources, if you will. So, that could be, we're coming up next week as the start of our, our fall break, and there's some remediation opportunities for the kids to, if, credit recovery, I'm starting to get into, not my area of expertise, but, you know, things that help the academic recovery, and ultimately help us with our, our, uh, graduation rate. So, uh, I think the old thought process was wait until summer school and, and get these kids caught up. But now, the new philosophy is try and catch them up in the fall, try and catch them up mid-year, and try and catch them up in the spring, so that, again, we can get better, uh, return on our, uh, graduation rate investment. So, you know, again, I'm not an expert, and my boss got away, so, but, the, the, the thought process is, a kid's maybe not gonna give up if you can help them res, you know, get them back on course sooner rather than later. Whereas if a kid gets all the way through the year, uh, I think some of them may throw in the towel if, if, if they, they can't see light at the end of the tunnel. So, um, did you, do you wanna add anything to that?
I'll add something.
Okay, go ahead.
So, in addition to what Tom said, that also includes, uh, staff that, or funds to help instructional staff with the support they need in their jobs. So, we have, the chief academic officer is one of the employees that's coded there, because she's helping out sta, instructional staff through library and media services, because that's a supplementary tool in the classroom. Also, we have instructional staff training, which is a part of that too.
Instruction coaches also.
So, uh, this attachment D report, if you go to the bottom third of the report, there's instructional support services, that section. So, about, so, this is the section that has improvement of instruction. There's curriculum and instruction development, so our CNI department. Uh, we have assessment in there as well. We have some technology, the instructional staff training, so our professional learning department. So, those are items that are in there.
That, that's what I asked, because I saw that category, and then I saw up above under special programs, vocational programs, I saw improvement, and I think actually a number of the categories, improvement of instruction. So, that's in addition to what, what's categorized under Instruction Support Services, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Finkster. I sort of forgot what I wanted to say, but I, it was something with regards to Trustee Kelly, um, your question about saving. I think what we always did was, and I know it still holds true today, is to rely on, uh, Dr. Kristin McNeil and your administrative staff to make those hardcore decisions about whether we're saving something. Because you may think you're saving, and in the long run, uh, if you don't hire a person, um, you could quickly get into a lawsuit. So, I think it's so important to leave decisions about, uh, safety, um, and, uh, curriculum, and leave that up to the individual site administrator, because they may have a situation that requires immediate, an immediate staff member. Because if not, we may not be following a particular 504 plan, or, uh, an IEP, um, or any counseling plan. And it's so important to value the information of the site administrator, and work with the, uh, area superintendent, along with, uh, Dr. McNeil, because those guys are the experts. And I think they've done a wonderful job. I commend them for it. I would never, I think, question, um, and you weren't questioning anyone, but what I'm saying is, it's important to use the people at the site and value what they're saying, because everyone has unique needs at their individual schools. And they know the plan that we don't know. And if we're not following it, uh, we could end up in federal court, regular court, any type of court. And I think it's better for us just to err on the side of caution and fill that position if needed. And those guys are the experts. And I think they meet, do you guys meet like once a week as executive council to decide what position should be filled?
So, it's part of the Financial Review Committee, and so the members of that committee are myself, uh, Kristin McNeil, Dr. McNeil, Don Huckabee, Pete Etchar, and David Lasik. And Mike is our facilitator. And so, our, our fundamental number one rule is, uh, safety and, and direct student contact. It's already, we, we don't even, those positions don't even come, they're automatically passed through.
Right.
Because, again, for all of the reasons that you talked about.
And this is where I was going with it. I know when you mentioned that, in your office, you would put that position aside, because obviously, the school site needs a position, uh, probably more immediate.
Correct.
And again, it is for safety, and to make sure that we're following plans.
Yeah.
So, and we, I gotta tell you, principals appreciate that. So, I wanna thank you guys for doing that. You guys do an excellent job of prioritizing, and that is so important. But I wish we could save, but I, I think it's important to look at the need. So, thanks, uh, Dr. McNeil, and that whole team. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Sorry, just one more question on this one. So, what we're looking at, um, in attachment D, is the total budget for all of these programs, or just the portion that comes out of the general fund? I'm sorry.
This is just the portion that comes out of the general fund.
So, and I'm sorry, I know I asked this question in the spring.
All, all good questions. Keep, keep asking.
Remind me, um, about, especially in regards to Gate and ELL, there is a portion of that that's coming, like, our, uh, Gate funding, a portion comes from categorical funding, some for ELL, we have some Zoom funding. Is that reflected, so there's a whole other portion of these program budgets that's covered by the state that's not in this attachment?
Correct. Yeah, that, so those are categorical funds or grants, state grants. And so, the, the, everything you're seeing today is general fund-related, but there are some, any, some additional funds for Gate in, in, in our categoricals, as well as ELL or Zoom funding that we get in categorical. So, those, those are over and above what we're already providing for. So those are over and above what we're already providing for. And so we look for opportunities to make sure we're not duplicating so that, you know, again, if we're duplicating something, maybe we let the categoricals take care of it and we can use that duplication somewhere else where we're coming up short. So, good question.
And then, I probably didn't do my homework as well as trustee.
I'm staying out of that one.
But I'm still learning about all of this, obviously. But would we see then in like the, I didn't see it in the rest of the attachments today, but would we see it maybe with the program? I think it would be helpful for me to see the big budget number for a program like GATE and understand what portion of it is covered by the categorical funding versus the general fund.
Sure. I mean, as we move forward in this process, we'll bring, again, we want to be centrally focused on the general fund with you today because that's where the big problem lies. But as we move forward with any budget cycle, we'll bring all funds, whether they be grant funds, state, federal grant funds, capital funds, debt service funds, insurance funds. But we thought today would be better just to stay centrally focused on the general fund. But at, not today, but at a future board meeting, we will bring all of the funds together. So, yeah.
Yeah, and I think for me specifically, it is when we're looking at the programs, you know, to understand the big picture of it would be, I know, helpful for me and I understand today why the general fund is the focus. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to the next report. Attachment E. This report is similar to the last report. It's flipped around a little, though. You'll see the headers here are those major program functions. Yes, it is very small. And then listed on the left side are all the object codes, which is our expense categories. So in the last report, we showed the major expense codes for salaries. So this first section here is all the different types of salary codes we use. So we have teachers, teachers at our multi-track year-round schools, ROTC teachers, and there's all kinds of other ones, overtime, bus drivers, sick leave payoff, longevity, vacation payoffs, benefits, and then all of our purchase service supplies, property and other items as well. And at the very bottom, we have our transfers out of the general fund to other funds listed. So it just provides you another way to look at the same information, just in a different way, different sort of detail. Okay, we'll move on to attachment F. This report here is all those expenses you just looked at in the previous reports, they're now listed for the FY17 actuals, FY18 budget, and our projected FY19 budget by Responsibility Center. So it shows all the departments and schools within the district that received general funds. And it's similar to a program or department budget because some of these RCs are a program, some of them are a department. Other ones, like if you look at ELL, that one, there's a small budget here, but that's because it's spread out to all the schools with their teachers and assistants that they have there.
I did want to note for the record, since the document is a public document, there's a line item, we're in, we're in F now, and there's a line item for the Board of Trustees that shows $585,000 in fiscal year 17 and then going up by 26%. And I did ask the staff about that. And that includes the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. And I did suggest that since the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission work is now in policy under emergency management, maybe it belongs somewhere else. I absolutely value the work that they do and it makes it look like the Board of Trustees is spending a huge amount of money, which we are not, on our own work. So I just wanted to share that conversation with everyone.
Just a comment about that, I actually have the same question. And I think that the question, the challenging question regarding the money in the Safe and, for the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, is where should it sit? Because emergency management, in my view, doesn't necessarily capture the holistic intent of the work of the commission, that it affects a number of other departments, including counseling and mental health. So when we talk about safety, we're not just talking about the physical safety, but also the mental health and well-being of the students. So that's just a comment as we think about what that might mean. But I think it is important to be clear that that project and that effort is currently sitting within the Board of Trustees' budget and adds a significant amount to that budget. One question I had about undistributed funds, just, it's just a phrase that's in the budget. Could you explain that for us and for the public when we talk about undistributed funds? What does that mean?
Good question, because it's a big category. Essentially, when we're, it can go right back to Safe and Healthy Schools, when that budget was created, it was kind of a board-directed, so when we classify some of our budget categories, we're trying to put it under the responsible party. So for every cost, we're trying to say, who's really responsible for that item? If you look under the business office, we have high school leases for copiers under our budget because I've just dealt with it over the years and I work with our purchasing department and the schools over the years to kind of develop the budget, so we stuck it there. But undistributed are kind of items that either affect all departments across the board or they're not really assignable to one department. The biggest thing in undistributed is our transfer to the Special Education Fund. Also included in there, we have sick leave payout, we have vacation payouts, we don't know necessarily what category they're going to go to. Our ESIP program, you can't, we don't code it to each school, where the person retired from, things like that. So substitute costs are budgeted underneath there also. So they're, they're major expenses that aren't really attributable to a single Responsibility Center.
Well, and I think that the thing that jumped out at me on the second page of attachment F was that it's a, it's a large number. It's, and I think that that's, that's something that I think would be helpful to have at some point and broken out a little bit more so that we can actually see what that means and where that, where that is, where that is going.
That's a good point. I think Jeff will show you that one on his next report, maybe.
Yes. On attachment G, the next report.
I'm sorry, I just want to jump in just a bit. I agree with trustee Frankel and our vice president, Madam Vice President, about Safe and Healthy Schools. I would like to see that, I mean, if it's not a problem, maybe we could figure out putting Safe and Healthy Schools in another category? I mean, would it hurt to do that?
So I don't think it hurts to, it's a choice, right? I think when we initiated Safe and Healthy Schools, part of it was a board initiative. When we talk about the work that the board did and we agreed that that's why it was in that couch under Board Services. So I think that's just a discussion we had to have. It wasn't, this story on the board, it was one of those here, it's with the board, it's part of goal number five. And that was one, at that time, that was one of the goals that was brought to the, we added as a board initiative, so that's why it was captured there.
Well, I know that the committee and the commission and the funds in that, in that line, the $400,000 that's currently there, I mean, a lot of it is linked to the work of the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, the audit that we just had reported to us, and some of the steps that need to be taken in the implementation of some of the direction from that audit. So I think it's going to be a very important conversation, not necessarily to stick it in one department or another without a whole lot of good thinking about where that should go. Because it is, that audit is about so many different parts of safety when we think about student safety. And I know that, you all know that, but I think, I think that is going to be an important conversation. And I think it is under the board because it was a priority that was, one that was extremely important to us. And it's still, and it is very important to us and continues to be a priority. And when you think about it, it's, you know, the question of, I think you said this once before and I agree, you know, $400,000 for safety doesn't sound like a whole lot. So I think part of the conversation is, where does that work need to go? Do we need to think about restructuring, how we oversee and look at the entire work of safety from the broader perspective, not just emergency management and law enforcement? But I think that's a good conversation that we should be having.
And just to build on that, I think that it's a conversation that is appropriate for all of the budget principles that we're, that we're looking at. You know, it's one of those things, not only do we review whether that A program, I'm not saying that program, but whether A program should still exist, but is it in the right place? Is it reporting the right way? Is it being reflected in the budget the right way? Because the budget is, it's a document of our values. It shows what we value and where and how. So I think that's a great conversation and I think it goes beyond just the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission that we, that we think about, are things in the right place? Are they, you know, are they located correctly? And to trustee Raymond's point, we have a lot of investment in Safe and Healthy Schools that is on the capital side. How can we look at these budgets in total so that the board has a, has a clear understanding? Because it's not just the $400,000, it's the million plus that we are investing in physical improvements as well. So if, if you could just help us and have that sort of as a, you know, as a background thought, the more we can see things in a big picture, you know, the better the board can make policy-level decisions about it.
So to that point, I'll just chime in here. I think, again, general fund today, but we have the ability to do this report with multiple funds in it. So it gets a little bit more challenging to read the report, but you can see capital versus general fund. And I think when we've done the big, big binder, if I'm not mistaken, if you recall from last March's session, we get down to that granular level of detail, if I'm not mistaken. Correct, Jeff and Mike?
I would also think it, it would make it easier for members of the public, members of the community to see if they're looking at, how much money is being spent on safety or whatever the categories may be? It's easier for them to follow that as well. And that's one of the things we want to be transparent about so people can track that. How much is being spent on special aid? What from the state? If anything's coming from categorical funds, you know, the other monies we have to allocate because what we're getting, you know, may not be sufficient. I think it would be helpful for all of those reasons as well.
Great. We're with you.
No, I'm sorry. No, I just agree with what you said. I do agree with that.
All right. Jeff's gonna get into some finer detail to start to address some of what that looks like.
You know, this, this may be a good time for us to have a quick break. Since we sort of paused there, I just wanted to have one break in the middle of our three-hour session. So why don't we have, just have a, let's see if we can do a 10-minute break and come on back and jump back in. Okay, thanks, everyone. We'll be on recess for 10 minutes. All right, everyone, let's go ahead and get ready to get back started. Yeah, because there won't be any motions or anything, so we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and jump right back into the continuation of agenda item 2.01, and I think we're turning it back over to Jeff?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. We're back in session.
Attachment G is where Jeff's gonna take off.
Actually, I got a quick question before we start, Jeff. Can you, like, if you were a school board trustee, how would you balance the budget? Like, what cuts would you make? What would, no, no, I'm just kidding.
I was, I was waiting for that answer. I was, that's gonna be good.
Yeah.
Jeff was like, they said they won't ask me anything really crazy at my first meeting.
Well played.
Please, Jeff, go right ahead.
All right. All right, attachment G. We were looking at the undistributed section last time. So you can look up the screen here on page 12 of attachment G. There's a bunch of categories under the undistributed section, it's at the top of page 12. And then you see there's the transfers from the general fund to other funds. Included in these items, and then at the bottom of page 11, more undistributed accounts, most of it's salary and benefits. So as Mike mentioned earlier, we have substitutes in there, sick leave payoff. We put professional growth in there for teachers because if they get their master's degree or their master's plus 16 credits or 32, they move up on the pay scale. And we don't know where that's going to happen, which school, which teacher, so we lump that into undistributed. There's overtime costs in there, additional time, vacation payouts, and the benefits that go with those. All that stuff is in the undistributed salary and benefit accounts. You can look at all these other RCs. I want you to say something.
Yeah, the, the main intent of this report is to take the prior report and break it down even further. So when you say, what's that 64 million made up of? 13 million of it on page 11 is salary and benefits. That's, as Jeff said, sick leave, ESIP, substitute costs. And on page 13, when you get to the total 64 million, you see right above that, 48 million of that is related to our transfers. But this as a whole, you can take each one of the RCs or departments that were reported on attachment F and get a further breakdown of the budget accounts to make up that RC.
Yeah, so if you look at page one of attachment G now, you can see there's the first one, or the third one down is the Board of Trustees. And that one, you, each of you have an operating budget, so you can, according to which district you're in. So there you can see each district, or each trustee for their district, or they have a $6,400 budget there. And then they have annual fees and services that pays for the audits, some other things, salary and benefits. If you go to the business office below that, we have the high school copier lease budget that Mike mentioned earlier. We have an annual fees and service, some other operating budgets, and salary and benefits. You're gonna see a lot of salary and benefits through all these reports, which leads us to our next report. Attachment H shows all of our positions and FTE and the salary and benefit costs for each RC. So right here, you can see there's the business office, we have some account clerks and account technician. This is going to go on through every single school and department in the district. And this, the total cost is the total salary and benefit. And this is calculated off of a snapshot of employees and positions we take each year when we build the position budget and combine it with the operating budget later. So as you're going through all these different RCs, you'll see teachers, secretaries, custodians, all different kinds of positions. Well, you're only seeing them at the RC level, so you might ask, what do these look like in their entirety? So if you go to attachment I, we have all these positions listed with the FTE and total cost by position type. So at the top of that page, we have Board of Trustees. The only positions in that group are the seven board members. Then we go to superintendents, chief directors, and we list all those positions. And if you keep going, we go to protext, and then eventually to psychologists, teachers, counselors. And it tries to break it down, the type of teacher they are. We don't get into all the subjects for teachers because then this thing would almost be never-ending. But we do try to break it down towards the bottom of the teacher section. We have some teacher on special assignments, teacher all education, teacher ELL, teacher gifted and talented. So we're trying to break it down at that kind of level for you guys there.
And this is salary and fringe?
Yes, salary and benefits. We have no further questions on attachment I. We can move on to attachment J. This, this isn't a report, but this will help, this is a, an input document for us to be able to gather information to make a report. And the goal here is for, we'll start out with the general fund. On the August 19th boardwork session, it was mentioned that you guys wanted to see the strategic plan and how the dollars in the general fund connected to the strategic plan. So if you look at the top, the headers here are the objectives of the strategic plan. And then on the left, we have the position titles with how many of those positions we have. And then if you go further down, it's not on this report or this page, if you go further down, you'll see operating budgets as well. So we'll, when we update and refresh the FY19 budget numbers and send those out to the departments and sites or other sites, they'll fill this out according to how their, these positions relate to the district's strategic plan. And then... And then I'll get that back and put it into some sort of report or multiple reports so we can see that.
So you haven't done this before?
This is brand new.
That is a huge effort.
So I worked with two of our business intelligence analysts in IT, and they put this on an intro webpage, so everyone will be able to click a link to it, only if you're on the district computer, and then go here, distribute accordingly, and then I'll collect that and somehow go on from there.
So I'll say it's 1.0. You know, this is like beta version, like, what does this look like? But that's one of the things we heard, and so we tried to build something in the system to capture that process, and we'll just have to refine it as we go, but this is the starting point for us to look at that.
Very, very impressive. I mean, this is like best practice anywhere, so I'm sure other school districts will be interested in how this works. But thank you for the work, because this is, I know, the work hasn't been all done yet. But thanks for thinking of it.
Thanks for the start.
Yeah, no, and I promise to be patient. I know we all will, because this is hard. This is really hard to do, so thank you.
Well, and again, I just wanted to, one, thank you for putting it in place, because we didn't ask it. We just, we were asking for information along these lines, but nothing like this. And we've certainly never had it before, so thank you for hearing us, Superintendent Davis and the staff, that this is something that the board thought would be helpful as we dive more into the strategic plan and making sure there's a connection, because you should be able to look at our expenditures and see what's important to us. And this is, man, I've never seen it done like in such a, with such a line like this. So just really thank you very much.
Think back to August 19. I think this was kind of the cornerstone of our discussion that day. And Jeff, while he wasn't sitting up at the podium with Mike and I, he was back taking notes, and we came back and talked about this immediately. And it's gonna, as Superintendent Davis said, it's a start, it's 1.0. You know, we'll work through the process with this, and I think it'll help us in some of our decision-making come, you know, the start of the year, or into the, through the budget cycle, so.
So that's the last of the reports. If you have any further questions or comments, I can take those now.
Okay, we're back to the PowerPoint. JJ, if you can take us back there.
Oh, we gotta get through some slides, man.
And here we are. So Mike's gonna take us through the use of applications of reports and some more data-driven decisions.
Thank you for your analysis, Jeff. Really, it was just to give you an idea of how we can, how we distribute our resources, at least for the General Fund. You made some great comments. Down the road, we will get the big picture with all the funds going, so you'll understand that better, too. But it's really the starting point to start looking at data and saying, "How can we use this data to make sure we're doing the best for students? And how can we take this data, look at it in a manner to say, 'Is there more effective and more efficient ways to do business' while we're trying to balance the budget especially?" So you can take this, you can look at programs and functions and do it on a per-student basis, okay? You could say, "We spend this much per student on EL. How does that compare to other districts? What are the results? What are those outcomes? Are we doing it in a manner that gives us better results?" So it's just a starting point to create questions, to begin deeper dive analysis into root causes and problems and where we need to go. And also with the departmental stuff, it's comparing key performance indicators to other districts, and we get a lot of those through the Council of Great City Schools. And the problem is, there's not some nationwide database that all this stuff is sitting out there. Most of this is gonna require our own efforts in gathering data, which takes a lot of time and effort. So that's why this is a multi-year process. We can't jump into every program this year, but it's a starting point to start looking at some things. And down the road, hopefully get to the point where we're always looking at programs and it becomes an ongoing continual thing as part of a budget policy.
So moving on now, we're at the community input part of the discussion. And so I know this was part of our August 19 discussion as well. And so I think it's important to show what we're already doing in terms of community input. And so obviously, all the board meetings that we have allows for public comment. Even between breaks today, I had to do a couple interviews with the television station and with Sam at the RGJ. And so again, I think as part of my discussions with those two groups, it's all about us trying to, you know, work through the process of the budget and get that community input. Through each budget cycle, we do have town hall meetings. I can just tell you, from our own experiences, we haven't had great turnouts at those town hall meetings in terms of, I guess, you know, some better than other years, I guess, on average then. So, but yeah, so that's certainly a way for engaging the public. So we certainly want to continue town hall meetings. I don't think you want to give up on that process. We do have to have a public hearing on the tentative budget as part of the legal requirement, so that's a board meeting, but it is a formal public hearing where there's publications in the newspaper to advise the community that we are having a tentative budget hearing. Additional inputs and insights of ways that we have gathered information, we've done surveys, we've done, you know, as we went through budget cut cycles over the last 10 years, we certainly sought out public input on ideas and suggestions, and we've got data, we've got a lot of data on that over the years. And having done it multiple years, you see similar suggestions show up year after year. And some of them, some of the suggestions, you have to respond back to the folks and say legally, "We can't do that." For example, a suggestion is we should charge for transportation. Well, by law, we can't charge for transportation. But somebody's thinking of a process, and so it's incumbent on us to get back to them and let them know, "Good idea, but again, not, or an idea, but one that we can't follow through on." Four-day work weeks were very prevalent during that process. Some districts around the country actually did implement that type of solution. We determined that it wasn't gonna be one that was gonna generate a lot of savings for us, so we didn't do that. And many other ideas through surveys and suggestions. So, I mean, so what I've been talking about is many different current processes that we've utilized to gather community input. And then we did have some dialogue last time with you about what we've done in the past. We did have some financial budget committees in the past. And just kind of going back and refreshing, because it kind of came up in conversations, I don't know if I was quite prepared that day, but we did have some interaction. But thinking back, now having some time to think back as to the ones that we did have over the years, I think what we generally found is they tended to be more educational-type meetings whereby, because you have to, I mean, governmental budgets are different than private industry budgets. That's just, it's just the way they are. It's apples and oranges in a lot of respects. So you have to spend a lot of time upfront with those types of groups, doing a lot of education. And I think once they learn our processes and see what we're doing, they generally, I mean, reflection shows that they generally didn't really have a lot of issues with what we were doing and what we were proposing, especially when we went through a budget-cutting process. But it's more just taking the time to educate yourself on the process. And since then, we have developed very transparent processes about our budgets, and, you know, the internet's gotten much more robust than it was 10 years ago. And so, you know, we've, again, I think, been applauded for our efforts for making our budget and our audits and everything available on the internet. So those are certainly good tools for us. All of our payrolls available online, all of our accounts payable transactions, and the construction and everything that the district does is very transparent on our website. So we wanted to kind of stop here, to kind of re-engage where, you know, where the board would like to go with the community input, so I'll stop.
I'll start here. I think, you know, when I look at this, I think what you're proposing is great, and I think the only thing I would say is missing for me is what role the board can play in this and in our connections to the community. And, you know, with the board liaison in place now that can help us, you know, with any support that we might need to be out in the community more and helping with that education. I mean, certainly, I'm not the CFO and can't speak exactly, but I think just talking more about our process, and I don't know if it, you know, for me, is gonna end up being more on social media or in small groups, but not everyone feels comfortable coming to town hall meetings or board meetings or has the time. But I think as a board, if we can engage the community more on our part and have the conversations with them, and I know with WC1, the staff really did that well in educating about the needs for the district. And I think there's already a model out there that Communications has come up with that we could, you know, I think, work with to help with this. And I think it's partly that input, too. I want to hear from people, especially when we start talking about programs. You know, we can look at the numbers and the data, but I want to hear the real stories, too, about what impact programs have made on individual families and students. So I think, you know, I see my role in this being a big part of, you know, how we get this community involvement. And I'm sure it's behind all this, but I want to see Communications and that team kind of owning some of that, too, that their messaging is sprinkled behind all of it, too, because I think they can be beneficial in the education part especially.
Thank you, Tom. Trustee Raymond, I think we've had some conversation about this, and I think that's a great idea. When we talk about the confusion around the budget is categorical funds. When you go out in the public, they don't understand that, how those are for specific categories that impact kids in the room versus that money being used to keep the lights on and pay salaries. And part of that is, how do we work with the trustees with going out to your constituents? Because you all are diverse and do different things, but maybe setting up some examples of having somebody from the finance team come with you if you have, like, your community meetings. Because I think we all reach out, we try to cover the whole scope of Washoe County, right? And we all reach out to different people, but how can we also provide you with some of those assistance based on what you want to do, right? And it might look differently for Scott, but creating a larger district plan from Communications about how we are getting out there to our constituents and to our parents around the questions they have and why it looks a particular way? Because as you and I have discussed, once you get down to it, they just don't know, and then they go, "Oh, now it makes sense." And we need to do that as a team.
You know, I may also suggest that when it's getting closer to this time in May, when we know we have to have that public hearing, maybe a concerted effort to reach out to opportunities that we have for interviews on, whether it's Sam Shad's radio show or whatever the case may be, one-on-ones at any of the TV stations, for one of us to, you know, show up and talk about, a little bit about the budget process and encourage people to come, so that we're out there saying, "This is there." Or if you can't come, this is how you can, you know, send in a comment online or something like that, like an active kind of push. To say, "This is coming, and we want you to be a part of it, and here are a couple of different ways. If they can't come, or they're kind of afraid to come or something, here's another way they may be able to provide some input." So maybe a communications effort around that a couple of weeks or so before the town hall meeting to really make it really known that we want your input, and here are a couple of different ways that we can get, and we can all be involved in that as well.
Yeah, when I think of town hall meetings, I mean, there's really two types. There's the one where the school district, we host it at a site, and we encourage people to come to it. And those are the ones that they can be hit or miss. Sometimes we get a good attendance, and sometimes we don't. But the other kind of town hall is when we have school district staff, one or two people go out to a group that's already meeting on their own and get on their agenda and present. And I've always found that those ones tend to be much more well-attended. And to me, I think PTA groups are a great example, because almost every school has a PTA of some sort, and, you know, some are more robust than others. But, you know, here are people that are already engaged with the school district. They're already pretty dedicated. They have students in the school, so they're really interested in what's going on. And I think that that would be a great place to have school district go out, because we know when they're meeting. It's, they're meeting at a school, usually at a library. It's a pretty friendly environment, and it's a great way to really get out to the community about, "Here's where we're at with the budget. What do you think? What are some ideas and suggestions?" And we can educate them as well.
And for me, I think that the most important piece of this will be when we continue our process around identifying how we're gonna move forward on doing the outcome analysis. And I think, because I think what happens, what I find, is that the community and most people, they may not agree with the decisions that we make, but if they understand the logic and the reasoning behind how we got to the decision that we made, the process we used to make that decision, and as we've outlined in these draft principles, if they're based on data analysis, but also other factors as well. But to be clear and very transparent about what those factors are, because I think where the confusion sometimes happens for folks is they wonder, "How did we make that decision? Why did we make that particular decision? What was the reasoning? What were the criteria? What was the basis upon which we decided that?" And I think the methods we use to communicate, I think, are gonna be very important, but the message that we deliver is probably gonna be most important in including that piece around the why and what, at least what we're thinking, and get input there. But when all is said and done, I think people need to know how we got to the decision we ultimately made.
And I'd like to just throw out for consideration and discussion, you know, I'm a huge believer in very thoughtful public surveying for a very important reason, that surveying tells us what people believe. And if we, early in the process of our budget development, have a better understanding of what people believe, it helps us to tailor our message and to make our reasoning visible to them, because we can understand what their thoughts are, what their, what their level of understanding is about various policy questions. So I just wanted to throw it out for discussion, because it can really help us do a better job of communicating, because we'll have a sense of where are the flashpoints for people and what are the things that we haven't, we haven't made clear what our reasoning is about. So just a thought. I know there, you know, there's a cost involved with surveying, but there are also easier ways to do it that we can do on our website. It's not gonna be statistically significant necessarily, but I just wanted to throw that out, because that can really help us to understand what we, what our messages need to be.
I like that idea very much. I think that that method will give us some information that's gonna help us at least know the kinds of questions people have and the way to message it and where we need to be clear in our reasoning, because I think we sometimes think we're being clear in our reasoning, and if people ask, a number of people ask the similar question, it tells us, "We need to make that more apparent and more transparent and clearer as how we came up with that particular point or decision."
I think it can also tell us where the gaps may be in terms of whom we need to be communicating to, whether it's based upon who's responding and who isn't, or if there are particular gaps that we know. This has more to do with those parents that, say for an example, have ELL students or GATE students or special ed students, you know, or low-income families or whatever the case may be. That helps us, too, now we have to, let's do a more concerted effort to reach out to that group. So they, one, that they're engaged and involved, whether we're talking about equity and access or because, hey, this is really something we can, from a messaging standpoint, they really need to know, because they don't understand. I think it can also lend the message that we want, we want to hear everybody's voice, and we want everyone to have that, at least have the opportunity to hear from us in terms of the why. That's, I think that's good. That's something we can certainly, hopefully, we can take a look at, how do we get that input before we do our messaging.
The other thing I'd like to suggest for our discussion at a future point is to bring some of those budget decisions to us soon, not only for '18, '19, but if we're on a track to have that big deficit, you know, so we're almost in October, so we've already lost July, August, September of this fiscal year to do any course corrections that might help us have a better outcome for, you know, this fiscal year end. So, you know, as you see those things that could be considered. And again, a fundamental review, you know, it's gonna take time, so we gotta get going on it if we're going to reap some benefit from it in the nearer term. But things like freezing nonessential positions, and I shouldn't say nonessential, but non-instructional positions or whatever, for two months instead of one month, you know? If we can begin to make some of those decisions soon, and I agree that that's not a sustainable budget decision, I'm with you guys on that, you know? That's not a structural deficit attack, but it can help us get closer to having a balanced budget for this year if we do them now instead of, you know, next March.
So I can chime in here, it looks like, maybe? So I think all the things in terms of community input, all the things that have been discussed are, from my perspective, it sounds like from Sumur and Tana Davis, and she'll correct me if I'm wrong, they all seem like doable things, so I don't see anything here that's gonna overwhelm us. I think that we can certainly attend meetings with board members. I think we can do radio and TV shows with you if you want us to do those. We certainly did a lot of those last budget cycle. I think public surveying is something that we've done in the past, and we can continue, enhance, and build upon that. Yeah, I think all of these are doable things from my perspective, and so, yeah.
Trustee Franco? Oh, I thought you were leaning the push. Vice President Holland?
I was just gonna ask, so what do you think your timeline is for bringing forward to us some of those, the policies and principles for action? Because I know... Because I know, I think we're anxious to help you and anxious to give you whatever guidance you need to, you know, get going.
So, from a policy perspective, I think Mike and I can start working on some of those, you know, immediately, because again, today, we needed to kind of get through today to see where we're at and if you're on the same page with us, and it sounds like we are on the same page. So, I think the next step for us is to walk away from today and start developing those policies that we can, that are our top priority, as many board members, trustee Frankel started out that conversation, I think many others have agreed. So, yeah, we'll start working on that immediately and hope to bring something back in the next month or so.
So, I think what we need to do before you go jumping in the pool, everybody wants to hang you up later. Look at which one, on a timeline, on one of the policy meetings, which ones we can bring back, because it's not in isolation. I know you love yourself, but you'll be gone for some of this, right? But working with Lisa Scurry and David, right, like what's already in the docket, what can we weave in to give the board, like we want quality, too. So, let us look at those items with the finance office and kind of build out a schedule, the most important ones we put up front. And remember, we talked about long-term planner, the intent of where we want to go before we go jumping and swimming real fast, then I have to throw you a white preserver, put you back in.
Thank you for saving me.
So, we'll come back with a plan, how about that? Let's look at what that looks like and come back with a plan, and then we can go from there.
And I think that would be great if we can do that at our next policy meeting, because we're talking about putting some policies in place. We have one coming up, well, I don't know if we can do it by then, because the next one is pretty, oh, it's the 17th! It's October 7th, didn't we move the October one? He's saying no? I thought we moved the October...
We moved the spotlight on success.
Oh, we moved spotlight, that's, yes. So, the next policy meeting then is too soon.
November 3rd.
November 3rd, ooh. Okay, so maybe, hopefully, then it may need to come forward in a board meeting, if before then, so we don't lose more than a month in that time. Yeah, just kind of the schedule, as you guys all took a look, if staff takes a look with the chief of staff and with our policy coordinator and with the financial team to kind of give us a, here's kind of a projection, and then at that time, as we look at those things, trustees, we can look, if there's something that maybe hasn't been prioritized that you think is really, really important, then we can have that discussion at that time as well, then we can, then that we were giving staff appropriate directions for how we go about getting started, those things that we deem as a board most important and can go from there. Still keeping in mind that the intents of those things are still staying in place, but the policy behind it may take a little bit more time and we take a look at those things that are most urgent. Yes, please, trustee Holland?
One other thought, I know it's kind of a sore subject, but does the state have any input on what they'd like to see us do differently in terms of process? And again, you know, not getting into any of that that went on before, but just as a stakeholder, as a very important stakeholder, is there any input that they have for us? And I don't, you don't have to answer me right now, but, you know, just, they're part of our community of stakeholders.
Sure. I can just generally say that we meet with the State Department of Education on a regular basis and go through budget discussions, and so we're in constant communication with them, so if there's something that they don't like or they see, I'm sure they'll say something to us, just like we're not too bashful about expressing some of our thoughts to them, so...
Any further discussions or questions from our financial team? Because if not, what we'd like to do this time is, I know we have another targeted time for when we have another work session, another budget, because you guys put in your timeline when you wanted those work sessions to appear, which is the last attachment, I believe, right?
Yeah, we're going to get...
Oh, I thought we were finished with the...
We're almost there.
Oh, we have, we have a few more, sorry, sorry, sorry. Next slide!
You set it up well.
Next slide!
Mike's going to take it from here.
The timeline.
Yeah, what this one details is really what we're obligated by statute to do. We have to file a tentative budget by April 15th, have to have a hearing on that, no sooner than the third day in Monday or last day of May. We've scheduled that as a regular board meeting on May 22nd, tentatively, and then we have to adopt the final budget before June 8th. But there's really no board meeting from May 22nd to June 8th, that's why we're saying May 22nd would really be the day. But as far as the overall timeline, we're starting the process a lot sooner, but there's still, to get to some really detailed, fine numbers for fiscal year 19, we're still processing information. We got to get to a point now where our current employees are settled in based on our latest enrollment, we've gone through the allocation process, we have to transfer and overage a few people. So, once those employees settle in, then we can use that as a solid base to update our projection for fiscal year 18 and then use that data to now move into fiscal year 19. What our intention is, is to send to our departments and schools all the budget reports. We'll be asking all of them to make budget reductions, and those have to be summarized and analyzed and costed out. As part of that process, obviously, we're going to say, we want us to look at best practices, we want to look at cost per pupil, there may be certain areas that we dive in, and we, when we bring the recommendations forward, we want to make sure that the rationale is behind it, okay? So, not that we're making the decision, but the objective is really to get to a February board work session, and this will be the one where we're looking at all the funds, not just the general fund, try to get some of the information everybody's looking at about combining capital with some of the general fund stuff and other categoricals for ELL, special ed, gifted and talented, those type of things. But we're also hopefully want to bring solutions for the budget deficit and the rationale behind those solutions. So, that's going to take a lot of in-depth analysis from district's leadership team and all our departments, input from school principals, staff, other stakeholders, and I think that's really when the big discussion's going to happen, and it's like, okay, here are some solutions to the problem. None of them are, we're saying, we're going to implement right now, it's to start the conversation and saying, if we had to do something, these are things we feel would best resolve the situation and still align our budget with the strategic plan in the best way possible. And they're not going to be easy solutions, they're going to be tough, and that's where we really want the public input and want to see the stories behind what's happening and how that impacts these decisions. So, that's kind of where we're looking at for the February, and that's a month earlier than what we've done in the past, we usually do this in March. But I don't know that we can do that earlier, because accumulating this data and going through that reduction process and getting forms out to people and vetting what we're talking about, it takes a little time, and we want to come to you with really solid, well-thought-out solutions. But that's still a month earlier, yes.
No, and I appreciate that, and I also appreciate very much these opportunities, this work session and the one we had in August. It does also feel like a lot of time between now and February, and I know we're going to be having policy discussions related to some of the policies we've mentioned. So, just to clarify, Mike, what you're saying is that the work that will be done in terms of doing the program analysis and the review based on outcomes and all that analysis would be done prior to that February meeting, and then we would have sort of the results of that evaluative process to help us? Is that what I'm, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that, because I think that part of the process, I know I personally kind of want to at least get an update on before February, if, how it's going with that, because I know those are hard conversations, and I think, I just want to make sure that we are apprised of how that conversation around outcome analysis. It's difficult, and you keep alluding to that, and I feel like we need to be here to support and guide the process as much as possible. So, I think, I just, I want to just clarify where that fits into this entire process.
Yeah, that probably has to happen. I think as leadership team, through the superintendent, we need to meet and say, are there certain areas that we know we want to look at right now? And define what those are and start a process of looking at them, then, and that's going to happen before we send out budget reports and things like that, because we can still look at those without having the concrete data fine-tuned, and in broad sense, we can still look at those, but those would be the bigger ones, and those, like you say, those take time. And the rest of it is really through each department head and leadership team member really perusing their budgets and saying, "Where can we make reductions? What did we save in fiscal year 17? Can we continue that in fiscal year 18? Can that move into fiscal year 19? What other areas are nice things to have, but maybe aren't giving us the return on investment or the results that we expected?" And that requires a lot of input and thought from all our managers. But the big ones, yes, we need to define those and bring them forward and let you know what we're looking at.
I would just add that you're going to be getting budget updates from now until that point as well. I mean, presenting the audit report is kind of a part of the budget process, because we're going to have some, I believe, some good news as part of that process, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, the audit's not been finalized yet, but I feel good about it. And we have a budget item just about on every board agenda from now till the end of the year, so there'll be budget updates throughout the process.
Does that answer your question, trustee Frankel?
Yes, because I know that trustee Holland also mentioned that it's a significant process to go through a fundamental review or a program review, and I think to be, how we're going to move forward with that is the question I'm going to have. We've talked about it some today, I know you all have some ideas and are going to be talking about it, I think to just keep us apprised of what the process is going to look like to do that, because one of the things I think we can see is if we go out, as we did last spring, and ask for suggestions, I think it loses its strategic focus, and people start to look at ideas for cutting savings, and I think we need to continue to kind of look at, what is the priority? What are the priorities? What are we saying are the priority drivers to make some of those decisions and in a longer-term, sustainable way? So, I want to keep that focus at that strategic level, and I want to hear more about how you all are thinking about structuring that analysis process going forward.
Yeah, I believe you're being clear, and I think as we get into that process and what it looks like and so on, based upon whether it's council, grade, city schools, whomever it is, that would help inform the way that it's approached from an internal standpoint, that's what I would think. Other questions, comments, go ahead, gentlemen, please.
Okay, so this is kind of another recap of the budget timeline, kind of more encapsulated process, so we've got to incorporate some of that community input process that we talked about today. It sounded like we had consensus around policies and principles with a few suggestions, and so we've noted those. So, again, this is the timeline showing a slightly different format, so unless there's any questions, get us to our last slide, which is, are there any questions? I think we were kind of thinking we were going to get the input towards the end, but I think we just did it throughout the process, so unless there's something that we missed, we're at the end of the presentation.
Well, I, from my standpoint, first of all, thank you. Thank you for this kind of review at this point in the fiscal year and really the robust discussion around the budgeting process, I think has really been good, and I think I can speak for the board and say, we appreciate the work that it's taken and even some surprise things, thank you, Jeff, that you guys have put together for us that we think can really help inform our processes as well. And then your openness for our suggestions and comments and requests, because, you know, we're all, you know, trying to get to the same place, and I think it feels good for us to be a part of that as a board, as well as individuals, trustees. So, it looks like, and I knew there was a date out there somewhere, February will be our next work session, but in between time, there are a couple of different things that have been discussed that we'll work on, is in addition to regular reports and the policies that we've talked about, as well as what the review might look like between now and then. So, that being the case, what I will, and speaking with legal counsel, we'll just entertain a motion that we continue the work on our budgeting process until the next budgeting work session, which is scheduled for February, if that's... Oh, you have a light on before, okay, my bad. Trust, superintendent Davis.
Thanks.
Yes.
I didn't know you were going straight to the motion.
Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am, superintendent Davis.
So, I just kind of want to thank the budgeting department, if you think overall, and we knew we, I mean, this goes back to two years ago for this deficit that we solved this year, like very, very intentful around solving that, and I think one of the things that I've heard in the past several weeks from the community was, "Thank you for being concise," right? Like, we went out with one number and we resolved the issue, there was a little hiccup, but overall, we didn't keep coming back saying, "Oh, well, we found this and found this," and I think that's to your due diligence and, of course, long-term commitment and all the things you guys know around the budget. So, thank you so much for that, as we continue to do this work and solve the structural deficit. Also, I think there's so many moving parts to this, because as we talk about academic return on investment, we're also in the middle of a new Nevada school performance framework, right? And we don't know exactly how that's going to come out as we identify one-star and two-star schools, right? So, as we talk about the money as it aligns to outcomes and objectives, this has kind of got to be fluid, right? Because we're still working through what the final thing would look like, and that might also gear some of our decisions and our thinking about how we continue to support schools, because, you know, we're going to have more one-star schools, that's not a secret, right? But how do we support those schools under this new framework? So, just in the mind of the deliverable, right, like, are we all anxious about this? We've really had some thought about this, because at state of the air, we never normally talk about the budget, but this year, we're going to talk about the budget, because that's what came up at the end of the year. But why didn't we know about this during state of the air? Well, we didn't know that at state of the air, because of the timeframe, so maybe we got to push state of the air back, so we can put the budget in the state of education address. So, all these moving parts, so that we can get as much information out to the community, but be as accurate as we can around students and student successes and needs. So, I appreciate the opportunity that we worked together on this, because this process is new for all of us.
Well, again, as we just go towards, I'm hopefully getting a motion, just, there were some requests from the trustees, as you know, last spring, to bring, to begin the budget process work earlier, and so we certainly appreciate that, because it puts us all in a better position to make more informed decisions that can certainly just, you know, help us attack this structural deficit, but at the same time, continue to support those students and those teachers out there doing, you know, on the front line, doing the important work. So, again, if it is the pleasure of the board, just looking for a motion, if it is your pleasure to continue this work on the budget process at our next board budget work session, which is scheduled for February.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, but we have a comment.
Well, you can go ahead and get a second.
Should we get a second, then we have a comment on that? If there is a second, we have moved a second. Vice President Holland?
I was just thinking, because there will be so many interim steps, I think we would just continue it to the next meeting, because we will have, we will have policy discussions, we'll have principal discussions, and I don't want to imply that we're not going to do any of that, and I don't think any of us think that, we're not going to do anything until February.
We think... Yes.
Yeah. But we should move it forward instead of two. Okay.
Okay. Well, if you're, okay. No, no, I have that. If you're open to a friendly amendment to just move it forward to the next board meeting and then see if the secondary is okay with that?
So moved.
Okay, your secondary is okay with that? Okay, that should cover that, then that's even better, leaves it open for whenever we discuss it, at whatever next meeting we have. So, it's been moved in second, and we just continue our conversation around the board, the budgeting process, the board budgeting process, and to our next meetings. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you for the friendly amendment, trustee Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion is carried, but the record show it is unanimous. Next, yes, gentlemen, again, thank you very much. Lot of hard work. Jeff, welcome, glad to have you. We appreciate that. Any other, any public comment as we prepare to close? No. No further public comment? Okay, then our meeting is adjourned, and we know our regular meeting of the board of trustees is at 3:00 PM, but trustees don't disappear, we think we have an item we need to discuss in a different forum, so...
Move on to the office.
Right, we are.
We can do it here at the office.
Whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.